All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Please be seated. All right, at this time, we will begin with some recognition. In an effort to encourage equity in education, the V S B A Board of Directors designated the month of March as V S B A Equity and Education Month. Equity and education is a significant challenge nationwide. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, in 2017, the majority of public school students were students of color, and more than half of public school students qualify for subsidized meals due to low family income. Public education has struggled to serve these students both adequately and equitably. When inequity in education persists, there's a cost to all involved, including missed opportunities for economic development, greater dependence on government supports, and fewer Americans ready to serve and lead. That being said, I would like to take this opportunity to read the following certificate of recognition. By virtue of the authority vested in the Constitution of Virginia and the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized Virginia School Boards Association Equity and Education Month. Whereas Governor Ralph Northam declared November 30th to December 6th, 2020, Ed Equity Virginia Week and the Virginia Department of Education announced the inaugural Equity Policy, Virginia's roadmap to equity, and the recipients of the Mary Peake Award for Excellence in Education Equity, which recognizes educators, policymakers, school leaders, and stakeholder organizations whose service and leadership is impacting equity outcomes for Virginia students. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has revealed inequities in schools and the increasingly significant challenge and responsibility we have in addressing them, and whereas the majority of school-age students in the United States of America are children of color, and in Virginia, 50% of public school students qualify for subsidized meals. And whereas we recognize that factors including but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, language preference, and socioeconomic status have demonstrated history of impacting the educational opportunities provided to a student. And whereas the promise of public education is for every child to be successful in school and life, and whereas it is important for Virginia families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussion of the challenges as a school community. And whereas the Virginia School Boards Association has established a task force on students and schools in challenging environments to make recommendations and to stay at the forefront of discussions and actions to make student opportunities more equitable in Virginia schools. And whereas we recognize that inequities in resources, including educational settings and buildings, supplies, and technology impede student learning, and it is our responsibility to directly address these inequities. Now therefore, I, Ralph S. Northam, do hereby recognize March 2021 as Virginia School Boards Association Equity and Education Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call the observance to the attention of all our citizens and residents. Signed, Governor Northam. And now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Katrina Weins, who is going to recognize our recipients of the Hamilton Education Program.
Board members, Dr. Benson, King George County members. My name is Katrina Weins. I'm the theater director here at King George High School. And I am here today to help recognize three of my students who are here tonight that earned the Outstanding Performance Award in the Hamilton Education Program's national competition. The National Education, Hamilton Education Program is a partnership between Gilder Lerman Institute and the producers of Hamilton the Musical. The Hamilton Education Program is part of the Gilder Lerman Institute's broader mission to improve the teaching and learning of American history. The goal of the program is to help students see the relevance of founding era by using primary sources to create a performance piece, following the same model used by Lin-Manuel Miranda for, in order to create Hamilton the Musical. This year has been a challenge, teaching theater virtually, as you can imagine. I was looking for anything and everything that I could do to help my students perform virtually and find production opportunities for them. Okay, so I found the Hamilton Education Program, and it was a way that I could use cross-curricular lessons. And of course, my students and I love Hamilton the Musical. We sing it all the time. And so the Hamilton Education Program was a perfect fit. My theater two classes participated in the program last semester, and I submitted one for, one performance piece for consideration to the competition. Jaden Weins' Faith Day and Wyatt Leisure's performance of Hercules the Spy was one of five national winners. We're gonna watch the video in just a moment, but I wanna, I wanna share with you what it was adjudicated on. First of all, it was researched, the performance piece must be based on identified primary source, primary sources from the Hamilton Education Program online website or found through independent research and show the students' understanding of a person, event, or document from the founding era. Historical integrity. The performance piece must capture the meaning and message of the identified primary sources, although artistic license can be used to change certain facts or context. And lastly, artistic expression. The performance piece must provide an original interpretation of the student's chosen topic through song, rhyme, or prose that conveys to the audience a clear, engaging message. It must be a unique expression of ideas that arises from the student's inventiveness and creativity in their choice of char, character or topic, their storytelling, their lyrics, their rhyme, their prose, or their musical composition. The student may not copy another work or violate any party's copyrights or trademark rights. The students researched Hercules' Mulligan using the Hamilton Education Project website, created the lyrics, created the backtracks, and the video performance that you'll see tonight. Let's go ahead and watch the video, okay?
The name's Mulligan. Lately, I've been hustling, working for the rich. My social life is bustling, but it did not start like this in the beginning. Wasn't always winning such a different life that has meaning. It all started in Ireland, my homeland. I wanted to shape my future with my own hand. We got up and left New York City, and the feeling just left me a little dizzy. But for our rights, we needed better synergy to live our mystery, 'cause I joined us on delivery. But I needed a plan from my everyday life to rise to new heights, to start a new fight. I got a job as just a simple tailor. Sounds like nothing major, but now I'm a player in the game that is revolution for our new nation. What's my role, you ask? Information. Every day, I use my work and my social position remaining secretive. I'm trying to avoid suspicion, using my wit and my keen intuition to advance the mission, keep up the British opposition. But how did I do this? How was I spot? It was all from my customers, the clothes they buy, 'cause I was a popular place. Especially among the British, was a place to relax where the officers weren't skittish. And when they were here, they would tend to get loose lips, get out around and let some things slip. I could also tell from the clothing requests which part of America they were off to next. They would change their clothes to match the region to ensure their comfort for the type of season. Well, I have the info now to pass it along to someone. No one would notice if they were gone. There was no one better than Cato, my slave. No one cared, send him off with the wave. You pass on the info to General George, where he would move his troops according to my report. 'Cause I mean, I was the key in the fight for the right to actually be free. It's 'cause my work, my role, but it's a fire that we get to celebrate the Fourth of July.
So again, I'd like to say congratulations to Jaden Weins' Faith Day and Wyatt Leisure for earning an Outstanding Performance Award and the national winning of one of five national winners. Jaden, Faith, and Wyatt, along with two chaperones, me being one, have earned the chance to attend the Hamilton Education Program full-day theater experience, including a matinee performance to see Hamilton the Musical. Since they are outstanding performance winners, they will also be considered for a chance to perform onstage during the morning program. They will also attend a Q and A session with the cast and crew of Hamilton the Musical, and all travel arrangements and costs will be covered by the program. The trip is currently scheduled for fall 2021, but if the theater is closed during fall of 2021, the prize will be awarded as soon as practicable after the theater reopens. So congratulations to them again. If you guys have questions for any of them.
So I just wanna say, I think your video was awesome. I'm a major Hamilton fan, and I'm wicked jealous. You're gonna get to go see it, so. To the three of you, yes.
Oh, that's fabulous.
Excellent job.
Sorry, but Jaden, I'd like to request a personal performance after you get back, you know, and talk with the actors and see what you wanna do to, I can't imagine getting it any better, but see what they would say. Come back and talk to us about it.
All of you.
All of you, yes. Jaden, Faith, and Wyatt, all of you.
Yes, I guess I was wondering between, so Jaden obviously is Mr. Hip-Hop Extraordinaire. So Faith and Wyatt, can you guys tell us what your contributions to the video? You help with the lyrics or the music?
They did a fantastic back end.
So me and Wyatt, I mean, we all researched it together, and we all worked as a team to come up with the lyric and try to find music first that we thought fit the beat to find something that we could match with the actual rap itself.
We also constantly made sure that every time we added something to the aesthetic that aligned up with the research we found.
Yes.
Yeah, well, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Weins, for your hard work. Oh, thank you, yes.
Who played the bass? Nice.
Nice.
Everything that was on the video is actually used by my team. So the, we went through the green screen background as well as the company track. It's all digitally produced by us. We did a, like, the beat, and then it's basically based on this done at Rock Band. So we were trying to figure out, like, as you say, we were trying to find a pre-existing hip-hop backing track that we could use, but not really fit. So we came with a decision to, to create our own, just to make it easier for ourselves, too. So we're trying to, so we're trying to change our lyrics to match the beat, make the lyrics be able to match.
Yeah. But the, it was fancy, the bass was amazing.
Very well done.
Yes, the whole thing. Great job, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Weins. All right, and now we will move on to our public and employee comments. Okay, so no in-person comment. So, Mr. Vance, do we have some folks online? Just one, okay. So you'll have three minutes to make your public comments, so please state your name and address. And then I will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. Thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Barely.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Richard, and I am a resident of King George, a parent of two students attending King George, and I'm also a teacher for King George County Schools. First, I do wanna say thank you for allowing me to present the winners of the Be Healthy poster contest at the last board meeting and to recognize the students who applied for the Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship. I would like to reply to a comment made by Ms. Pansiera later during that meeting where the students were recognized, and she stated that the students and the teacher were there didn't follow the six-foot guidelines. As the teacher who was there, that was true. We did not follow the six-foot guidelines. We stood together for less than five minutes, thus not meeting the CDC's definition of a close contact, and everyone was wearing a mask. That is entirely different than being in a classroom for an entire school day. And as someone who is still working from home under a medical exemption, I try very hard to limit my exposure to others. And had I thought the photos would have taken longer than five minutes, then the students and I would have definitely maintained six feet of social distancing as suggested by the CDC and medical professionals. I know that today was the first day back in person for many students in grades three through six, and it's been nearly a year since some of these students have been inside of a school building. Countless hours went into creating schedules that would accommodate both in-person and online instruction for students in grades three through 12. At the last meeting, some school board members spoke of the need to come up with other additional schedule changes to begin mid-April to allow additional in-person instruction time. I beg you not to make any additional changes to the schedule. While those of you without students in grades three through si, three, three through 12 may not realize that SOL testing begins in mid-April, and under normal circumstances, it brings many additional challenges. But changing schedules for students and teachers takes away from instructional time because of new routines must be learned, and time at this point should be spent covering the content that needs to be reviewed for the SOL test, not trying to learn another new routine. My own two children are very concerned about the amount of instructional time they will be losing to accommodate the new hybrid schedule for their buildings that begin after spring break. It seems unwise to make further changes at the expense of a majority of the families who wish to remain virtual. I also would like to request that students continue to be required to wear masks in the buildings and on buses. I've seen numerous posts demanding that students not be required to wear them since the teachers had the opportunity to be vaccinated. It is very critical to remember that not everyone was vaccinated, and some were not medically able to be vaccinated. Additionally, staff members are living with family members who may not be qualified to be vaccinated at this time. I'd like to close by thanking those responsible for finally updating the number of COVID cases in our school system, and I would encourage the board to request that that dashboard be updated more frequently throughout the month rather than having to wait into, into the new month to see what our schools look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. All right, at this time, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a request. We have some small corrections to make to the minutes of February 8th and February 17th. So we request you remove those from tonight and allow us to bring those back on the 22nd. And we also would like a, a chance to do a final review or gain information about the proposed regulation, G C B C. So we'd like to bring that back on the 22nd as well.
Okay.
Appreciate your consideration there.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And we have the minutes for the January 11th, 2021 regular meeting minutes and January 25th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
We need to amend it. So I approve, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, removing the February 8th and the February 17th regular meeting minutes and special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just the main motion, you're gonna table it and go to the other motion. You made a motion.
Apparently, my motion was not correct. Ms. Pansiera corrected, and we will proceed.
We'll table the. We'll withdraw Ms. Hawke's motion. We now have on the, for consideration, Ms. Pansiera's motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, to remove the February 8th and February 17th, 2021, meeting minutes. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the action items. We have the bus garage WAN connection. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've discussed this last meeting and appreciate your consideration tonight in approving this. Just to summarize very quickly, this will allow us to enter into a contract, which is E-rate reimbursable, all but $10,560 per year. It'll allow us to contract with Atlantic Broadband to supply wide-area network connection at 400 megabytes per second to our transportation facility. Currently, we have a, an undersized connection to the transportation facility, which is problematic with all the traffic that goes on that line. So we appreciate your consideration in this, and happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Benson?
Yes, I have one. Is the contract for three years, correct?
It would be a, it's renewable. So it's a, it's a one-year contract that then is renewable the second year, the same cost.
So is it, but what is the, approve the Atlantic Broadband three-year contract? So is it one with two, one year? Or is it just? Why am I?
It's a, it's a three-year contract. In other words, they, we've secured the pricing for three years, and as with any item, we can renew each year the contract for the service.
Mr. Vance, do we have random background noise?
So the alternatives is what we're going with? It's just the alternatives is what gets me confused.
Yeah, we just, we place alternatives there, but yeah, that's, the alternative would be not to approve it, obviously, which would leave us with an undersized connection. It just isn't meeting our needs. So my recommendation would be to move in, and the first alternative to approve the, let's move your contract as presented.
So I make a motion to approve the Atlantic Broadband contract for three years at 400 megabytes per second at an annual cost of $10,560 per year.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now moving on to the second action item for the evening, Bring Your Child to Work Day. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, this is your, your second review of this proposed regulation. This regulation then includes language that would recognize Bring Your Child to Work Day as a, as an excused absence for those who choose to participate.
All right, do we have a motion?
I just had a question. So I mean, I know that this is a policy that we've had for a while, but in meeting over it, under the perfect attendance, attendance recognition, it only excuses activities where this award will be school-related absences. So does that mean if you have a doctor's appointment and you can't get it until, I mean, some of our elementary kids either in school outside of or inside of doctor's hours? So is that really true that you can't get a 100% attendance?
Let me, let me clarify where the origin of this, and then you can maybe help Ms. Pansiera with the, where you are in the regulation.
It's at the very bottom. It's the very last, perfect attendance recognition.
So this, while I look for that, do understand this is a new regulation to the policy manual, but it has been published in the, the Student Family Handbook, in a very similar fashion over the last couple of years. So now I'll, I'll look for the section, at the first page, you said the bottom.
The very last page at the bottom.
It's page 30 in the packet, if that matters.
For perfect attendance, attendance recognition.
Yes, that's the way I read it. That is correct.
Now, Madam Chair, may I respond?
Ms. Hawke?
Having worked on that specific area for many years while employed with the schools, we were trying to acknowledge all students' attendance efforts and yet not encourage children to come to school sick or if they had fevers, et cetera. So we had been in an effort to try to discourage the absolute literal perfect attendance, but instead encourage overall good attendance. And I think the principals had been working very diligently at supporting this in their award ceremonies. We had lots of students who were doing great in increasing their attendance without it necessarily being perfect. We were following the, the guidelines of various health and education advisory groups on national level. And I had gotten a note from Ms. Fisher that, actually, I'm trying to find it now, but I, I don't think that it was ever removed from the, from, from the family code, from our student code of conduct or from the handbook in terms of the listings because there is always a caveat for principal approval of an additional item or a special circumstance. So I don't think it's a huge addition to, to re-include and re-acknowledge that that's important. I think the perfect attendance issue is a, is a separate item that we might pursue with Ms. Fisher, if that's your concern.
Yeah, I'm just kinda bringing it up to make sure that I understand it correctly, because you don't have to be sick to have a doctor's appointment. I mean, young children get wellness doctor's visits, plus you have to go to the dentist, and they're on the same, same schedule, so.
There are many, there are many reasons for absences, K through 12, but the whole point is that we need to encourage students and their parents to be careful and observant about attendance, but not to go crazy with the ideal of perfection.
Well, I just, if we had that caveat in there, that's gonna be something we can bring up at a later date with Ms. Fisher. I mean, I'm not gonna disapprove it. I'm just saying that when I was reading through it, I found that to be a little odd, especially if we're gonna add something of this type of activity.
Any additional discussion? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the addition of the Bring Your Child to Work Day absences as an excused absence?
Yes, I move that we include Take Your Child to Work Day as an excused absence.
Second.
So I just wanna clear, I don't mean to interrupt your, your, your work here, but I wanna make sure that we understand from the last meeting that Regulation J E D dash R is being proposed to you in totality tonight. Or it was proposed the last meeting. So you'll be approving Regulation J E D as presented, not just one part of J E D. So if you're wording for the motion, it would finally be to approve and include in the policy manual, Regulation J E D F D.
Do we need to table the first, first motion and then make the second motion that we accept the J E D dash R in its entirety?
Yes.
So I make a motion that we accept the entire J E D dash R. I just made a motion.
Yep, we have a new motion.
I understand that, but I was, could have amended my motion a lot. Now it's been tabled.
Okay, well, it's been tabled. And that's fine, because it's a part of the new motion. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the J E D dash R policy. So we have a motion to approve the J E D dash R policy as presented. Do we have a second?
Second again.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, we will now move on to our discussion items. First, we have our 2021, 2020 insurance rates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for several years, I think three now, we have been very fortunate in that there has been no increase imposed on our insurance, our health insurance premiums for school division employees. Unfortunately, and I guess we were due, we did receive notification recently of a 3.7 or an average of 3.75% increase for our next year's renewal contracted rates. So we bring this to the board this evening as a discussion item. It is helpful that we, we will certainly include the increase and you'll see when we present the revised budget that that increase is reflected in the revised budget. We split the, the, the increase 50/50 between employer and employee in this next version, but we do need to have your consideration of this item so that we can then begin preparing materials for open enrollment for our employees, which is right around the corner. So appreciate you understanding that we have received that information from our provider, Local Choice. Included in the packet for you all as a board and for our employees and public are the new tables, the monthly rates for health insurance that will be due next year for those who choose to participate. Appreciate your consideration and your hopeful approval so we can move forward with assembling the packets that our employees will need to participate in open enrollment for next year. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Are there any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins?
What was the reason for the increase?
We've not, we, we usually sit down with them and they'll come and make an appointment. But I know that claims history, I couldn't tell you exactly because I've not received their vote that they bring to us to show, but they have a methodology that they go through in reviewing every subscriber. And I know part of that is claims history, part of that is, could be inflation, their own calculations. And they inform us if there is an increase. Again, we've been very fortunate last several years that we've not realized any increase. I do, I guess with inflation, I am, if there has to be an increase, I'm certainly glad that it's relatively low and not in the teens and that kind of thing. Experienced on occasion.
So it's still negotiable?
Uh, no, I don't believe it's negotiable. That's, that's what they, what they charge us for the premium. If we were to negotiate, then much like we did several years ago, we would need to enter into a, you know, review process, invite other vendors to bid or to open it up for others to then make proposals in terms of rates, which we did four years, five years ago, maybe, more than Local Choice. So if we believe the, the escalation is becoming too high, we can certainly repeat that process, but we would need to look to begin that process well before now.
Well, I was, I wasn't advised of if there was going to be an increase, so.
Neither will read till this week.
So I'd like to know why 3.75 seems high, even including inflation. If it's claims, then I'd like to know the percentage of claims they're using for the adjustment. And so you're saying it's not negotiable?
It is not as far as the, the need to renew. That's my experience. I, it's not that we can sit down with the provider and say, well, this, you know, would you consider this amount or this percentage instead of this percentage? You know, they basically issued to us the, the annual renewal proposal from them.
So it might be time again to review this.
It could be. I don't, I mean, that's I, I don't think that's, I understand and I respect that believe that to be high. I think relative to some of the increases prior to us going with Local Choice, we were, we were experiencing, I remember, seven and 11% increases, which prompted us then to then look for you know, an alternative, which was, which is what brought us to Local Choice.
So the three-year claim rate, we've had a zero increase, but the, the, the claims have gone down.
From the local choice, we actually received a discount on the increase because our claims were low relative to the whole group that they looked at. 3.75% is actually very low.
For the public, the group that she's referencing would be all of the school divisions or entities that then subscribe to the local choice.
Which is the state, it's the state of Virginia. Our neighboring divisions have seen as much as 18%.
Any further questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dr. Benson, will we need to do any amendment to our budget as presented to the Board of Supervisors at this point or will we wait till it returns to us?
Yes, you'll receive, you know, I'm hopeful that, well, we will be able to present to you on the 22nd a revised budget. There's been communicated with the board about changes at the General Assembly in terms of the revenue side. Certainly the insurance change. And then the recommended compensation for employees will all bring changes to the draft that you initially received. So you'll have a chance to receive that on the 22nd, review that. And then I do anticipate, I met with the county official today and I participate the 20, the end of the month, perhaps the 31st. It's not been finalized, but I believe we were targeting the 31st as the opportunity to meet with the Board of Supervisors. So that would give you a little bit more than a week to review the, the final draft that would then be prepared for the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Dr. Benson, I have a question. In the monthly rates that are included in the packet, so that has the 2021, 2022 monthly rates. And then there's the, the column that's highlighted, it says additional cost difference split 50/50 board slash employee. So for example, like the first line says employee only and the additional, the cost difference is $24. Is that $24? That is split 50/50. So employees will see it that in that category, I would see a $12 increase. We would pay an additional $12. How am I interpreting that correctly?
That's the way I interpret. Yes, the 24 and then will be 12 for the employer side.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Just clarification. So the last year's claims amount is dollars and what the 3.75? That amount was the total amount? The 2.75 increase?
Yes, certainly. We, I think we can get the first data point you're requesting. We can, let me make sure I understand. So the total amount for if we were to apply it to the current employee group, of course, we won't know until next year with open enrollment, who's participating? So do you want an estimate for next year or are you?
Lucky, Jerry, reasons, yes, estimate.
Okay. We'll just apply this year's subscriber pool to that increase and give you that as an estimate. That's fine.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Dr. Benson.
Thank you all.
Moving on to our policy manual updates.
I have a question. So, Dr. Benson, both section EF and EFD notes that EFB possibly has had a, a title change, but I don't see where EFB was included in it. If you look under cross references on EF and EFB, it references EFB, free and reduced price, and that's been crossed out and then food services. So was EFB done previously or should that have been included in this packet?
I think I'm, I'm tracking what you're saying. In other words, has the board, this board approved a policy EFB that is now just titled Food Services? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I'd have to check. I'd have to check the legitimacy or go to the policy meeting to see if you have already dealt with EFB.
But I believe that EFB should be included with this packet.
I would agree. If it's, if it's, or at least presented to you prior to this one, if the if EFB has not yet. I can check one then. If you want to pull this one, that's fine.
You set that on the side.
Sure.
Well, these are just for discussion, right?
Correct. But if it has not, we will pull it then for action next time and we'll just place on the next discussion. And we'll make sure that the, or EFB is with it, is a companion to it.
Okay. Also in GBN, we have eliminated vacancies and new physicians within the division are advertised on the internet. Is there any other ways that we make advertisement for vacancies? Or is that our internet in each school and in the central office? Does that mean the internet website of each school?
Well, we certainly advertise using the internet.
I know.
So I'm not, I, the semantics or the, the wording, of course, these are just recommendations from V S B A as to why. You know, that sentence has been struck. In practice, it doesn't change. You know, we post widely, we post using electronic means as probably our primary way of communicating vacancies. I can, I can check as to why the entire sentence was, was struck.
I'm just thinking we might want to just leave that in there. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't understand why it would be struck either.
Yeah, my, my, my guess would be Ms. Pansier is that the, you know, the V S B A is a, is a service for all school divisions throughout Virginia. And so perhaps while it fits in our case, because we do use all three of those modes to advertise physicians in one way or another, other school divisions may not. And so it may simply just be trying to, to broaden the language that it's applicable to all who subscribe to V S B A. But I can assure you, it does not, whether it's struck or not, that's, that's the way we would promote vacancies.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Questions, Mr. Collins?
I'd like to discuss policy D, DQ. Section eligible for employment, section B, line 4. It says convicted of a charge of refusing to take a blood or alcohol breath test, and that's been stricken. I think that needs to stay in that. They should not be eligible. Busted and convicted in the last five years of that.
I'm happy to check with V S B A to see you know, the basis for that recommendation, whether it's, there's a legal conflict or not.
Well, as a, as a local board can make, can not agree with their recommendations and keep that in the policy.
Correct. I, I just want to make sure that, that a recommendation of a local board then would not come into conflict with any kind of statutory change or anything like that. That's all.
So, Mr. Collins, are you stating under the drug and alcohol testing? Is that what you're noting?
Eligible for employment, any applicant for employment operating a school bus, transporting people must A, B, D is furnished, statement with copy of records from department of motor vehicle showing that the applicant within the city five years has not been convicted of a charge of driving under influence, driving under influence of alcohol or drugs, and then it's stricken out, convicted of a charge of refusing to take blood or breath test, and then it continues not to be stricken, convicted of felony or a sign of any alcohol safety action program of driver alcohol rehabilitation pursuant to Virginia Code 18.227121.
So I'm just wondering if they struck that out because under drug and alcohol testing, it says drivers, this is in addition to, are subject to drug and alcohol testing as required by state and federal law. Any driver who refuses to submit to a test shall not perform or continue to perform safety sensitive functions, but what your state is for.
That's talking about a, a current, this is talking about a
Or past.
Five, conceding five years.
Okay. I understand.
I don't think it would be prudent to strike that language.
Well, perhaps Dr. Benson could do some research with V S B A and, and bring that one back.
Yeah.
Right. I just noticed at the end it says pursuant to Virginia Code 18.2, and I would have just want to check for your, on your behalf as a board, that if Virginia Code, if that section of the code has been changed, then obviously the
18.2271 is the, is the drug code for marijuana. It's not, it's not the driving code.
18.2272 is a refusal of.
So just the code that's referenced here.
2339 is the qualification for a bus driver. Let's take that in there.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at 18.2 dash 271.1 at the end of that sentence, the one that it references. That's all.
I don't have the code in front of me.
No, I don't, I'm not challenging you, Mr. Collins. You're much more aware than I am, certainly. I just would check with Ms. Ewing to see if, if, and I'm unaware, but if there's been a change to that section, it seems like when they put the, at the end of the sentence, or in the middle of the sentence there, pursuant to Virginia Code, there, the, the preceding language, it looks like they're trying to make consistent with that code. If that's not the case, if that language is still there, then I don't see why you wouldn't have the prerogative as a board to keep that language. Then perhaps it's just a, on her part, on Ms. Ewing's part then, an annotation or, or edit that she's recommending. But usually there's a legal basis for the edits.
More than likely, there are some divisions that will accept a, a, a driver that's been convicted of a DUI or, or a drug offense within three years. This one's five years.
They're not saying convicted of a drug or driving offense, they're saying refusal to take a blood or alcohol.
Okay, so it sounds like.
In line, you gotta get convicted of a driving under influence if you refuse. That's, that's a fact.
All right, so it sounds a lot.
Convicted of a lot of, anyhow, I like that one pulled to the side, please. If that's okay.
Certainly. It is a discussion item, so that's fine. Can be returned. So it sounds like Dr. Benson will go back and check on the legal reasons with Ms. Ewing for why that was pulled and make sure it's not in conflict if we were to leave it in, and we will revisit that at a subsequent meeting.
I just think it's prudent for our divisions.
Understood. Okay. Any further discussion or comments on any of the other policy updates? Take that as a no? All right, so then we will move on to our final discussion item for the evening, which is an in-person learning update. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, per your request last meeting, I met with the, the principals and I first want to say that I greatly appreciate them all being here this evening. Three in particular, one from, with Dr. Boyd, Ms. Collins, and Ms. Harris on behalf of the elementaries are, are here to support your discussion. They've prepared some information for your consideration, but I want to make sure upfront that this is not, not to confuse the public, this is not a new recommendation we're making. I'm very pleased that today we began with our third through sixth graders per the board's approval. All accounts seem to, to say that's gone very well, and that's because we had groups that worked very hard to develop plans that were very thoughtful, that maximized the opportunity that we believe we would have with students who were coming in person. But we are here to support your discussion. We don't want to overstep. We, we don't want to, you know, I guess, put ideas into your mouth, so to speak, but we do want to obviously be very supportive of the board. Hear your questions or hear where you want this discussion to go or continue. I do have prepared slides that I know were, were, were distributed and posted to our board member website. I have hard copies for you. I'll just send them down the dais as we prepare. And again, I'm thankful that our principals are here to help support your discussion as far as any further consideration with regard to in-person learning. So with that said, I'll invite, we've gone elementary, middle high, it's been our usual order unless the board has a different preference, we'll just follow that. And I'll invite Ms. Harris on behalf of our elementary schools to come up to you. She has information. If you'd like to hear her information and then discuss, or if you'd like to open discussion, it's certainly, we want to follow the board's lead on this as far as what you would like to do. And I'll pass the elementary.
All right.
Sure, Ms. Harris. So I would recommend, how about we let Ms. Harris present her, her presentation and we'll save questions for the end? Any objections? Okay, Ms. Harris, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. I am here tonight on behalf of all three elementary schools. Just to kind of give you an update of where we're at, I want to, especially why I have public comment here, I'd like to thank all the teachers, parents, and our students, because today we did start our three through six hybrid, and it went pretty smoothly overall for our first day. So I want to thank everyone for their hard work. I just kind of want to recap for you, kind of where, how we got to where we're at right now. Just a basic roadmap of how we started this process. We established a structural plan that would offer in-person and virtual options for our families with minimum changes to the current schedule. That's kind of been, you know, how we've been moving the whole time here. We outlined a plan that maximizes instruction with current staffing and resources available at each site. One time I presented, we were thinking that we'd have to pull resources to keep the virtual model going, but we got creative and we tried to make that work. So right now at all sites, we're working both modalities simultaneously. We created and implemented a division health and safety mitigation plan that promotes health and safety for our staff and our students, which we are having no trouble implementing, and everyone is being compliant with it, so things are going well in that department as well. We created, we created a collaborative plan with staffing and transportation based on data that was represented, parent's choice of instructional modality for the second semester. And at that time, which was very crucial, that, that data really drove our planning into where we are now. Teacher changes were made in both modalities at the semester break in January, which aligned with our academic calendar. We started our virtual classes where we made changes for those people that wanted to stay virtual, and then we started our in-person full-day instruction for K through two with the mindset, we'd made the teacher changes and placement changes for grades three through six based on the hybrid model. So just, I want to kind of recap of kind of where we got to where we're at right now. So as you know, our current in-person plan, our K two in-person, they're coming four days a week in person, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and one day a week on Wednesdays is asynchronous work. And this in-person is full-day instruction, and right now we are pretty full at our fifteen limit capacity in the classes at all three schools. Three, three through six, we did the hybrid model, the students were ten, two days a week, the blue day, Monday, Thursday, and the gold day, Tuesday, Friday, and the three days a week is asynchronous work. This schedule maximizes the in-person instructional time, it breaks up the asynchronous learning days and allows more immediate support for all students. And just keep in mind, this is two full days of instruction, which is equivalent to a lot of our neighboring counties that are offering four days of half-day instruction, so they are getting full-day instructions. And our class size, our goal was to keep it around fifteen, as best we could. So our current virtual plan is K through six, we're offering, students will be engaged in both live and self-paced supported learning, and that is going four days a week with Wednesdays being asynchronous. And right now that at all buildings, we are able to offer that both modalities and, and keep the classes going. Now, in making the staffing changes for K through two, we did have comes, you know, we only have what we have to work with. So just to keep in mind, to make the K through two staffing for full-day instruction for our kids, some things that we had to consider and put in motion. Each site made adjustments with current staff placements to accommodate the K through two instructional model with the expectation that three through six would be hybrid. For example, we moved teachers around to accommodate the classes in K through two to keep those numbers down and offer the in-person four days a week. For example, at one school, we moved a third grade teacher down to a kindergarten class. With expectation being hybrid, we could increase those numbers because we could divide them on the blue gold dates. So hopefully that makes sense in our class placements. Each school was able to secure three long-term subs, and at every building, these long-term subs have been placed on instructional teams, either virtual or in-person to accommodate both of these modalities at this time. So there's not like, no one's extra around the building. They are assigned to classes and they're teaching to pull this off so far. Also, special schedules and rotations were altered based on the hybrid plan. All right, K through two eat lunch in their classrooms, which required allocating staff to cover for supervision of students to offer teachers a lunch break. So at all those classes, we have to have coverage for lunch, coverage for them. In the hybrid model, since it's not as many students, we're able to actually bring them to the cafeteria and space them, using the whole cafeteria accordingly and safely. So that helps us not needing as much supervision for that duty-free lunch for teachers. And students were assigned new teachers in classes on January nineteenth, based on the current data collected from families. So all changes have been implemented. So even from the transition today, from January nineteenth to the day, the students were giving their teacher, their in-person teachers, even though they were teaching virtually. So today they just came in person. So it was a great smooth transition from both models right now. So just to kind of bring you up to date where we're at. So looking at staffing, I know it was a discussion of how can we bring three through six back four days a week? Staffing needs to support that virtual school models for the in-person four days a week. Instruction for all grade levels requires staffing resources that are beyond our capability at this time. Actual classroom space is another obstacle. In-person class sizes without the hybrid option would be an average of twenty-five students. To maintain the maximum capacity goal of fifteen, additional classes needed to be added, and I think you have that in your, in your packet there. So we broke it down by schools. Right now, even with our hybrid model, we're at the capacity, or even in some cases, over it a little bit. Some classes have like seventeen kids in the class. So just at my building in Potomac alone, to pull this off, to, to bring more kids back, actually just with what we have right now, we would need additional teachers at the grade levels, and we just really do not have them or have the space. If a teacher is teaching virtual, does not mean they're teaching from their home. We also had to provide space for teachers that wanted to come in and teach the virtual classes in a space. So we've had to accommodate both modalities even on-site. And moving forward, things that I just would like for you to consider, substitutes can still continue to be a concern. Currently, from the three elementary schools, you know, if a person calls out sick or something, I'm gonna call them a random sub, not the long-term subs. We've had one sub that has accepted work between the three elementary schools, which requires reallocating of staff in the instructional day. So regular life circumstances have to be accounted for in addition to the medical exemptions that we're also planning around. Example, maternity leave or illnesses, and this also trickles into the transportation. This creates problems too, and they run short. A prime example is today, we had, we were short a bus driver, so they had to do a double run the first day back. So things do, it's a trickle effect, so that's something we need to keep in mind. To make any changes to the hybrid model in grades three through six would create a domino effect, which would greatly impact the current virtual and the in-person academic schedules. So please keep in mind, to increase in-person, virtual would require restructuring of live teacher-directed instruction. We would have to reshuffle that. Right now, we're giving the integrity of our instruction, we're offering the best that we can. The virtual kids are getting live teacher-directed instruction, and they're getting some small group instruction to really help, especially even in our primary grades with the PALS interventions or remediations and things that we have. There's no way we can do it all. So that's something to consider. A full-day model requires more staffing to operate daily duties such as lunch and things like that. So if we were to bring more kids in those classrooms, then our plan, even with the lunch, is we'd have to reshuffle all that, which would require more staffing to, to provide coverage for lunches and things like that, that we haven't planned for. We have been very transparent in our plan. Families were given a choice based on the plan that we have in action right now. To change the plan moving forward would create undue stress for all stakeholders, because everyone had made a decision based on what we had to offer. So now to change the game plan now would create, it would create a lot of havoc in both worlds. Because we cannot accommodate the current situation we have in the virtual and keep it going exactly the way it is. And then to bring in extra, even if we could find people to create new classes, because we'd have to, you know, kind of take this, you know, take these classes apart and create a new class, we don't have the space for them, and then just the quality of the instruction is definitely going to come at a cost. Another note to keep in mind, our SOL testing window is April twenty-sixth through June fourth. All students in both modalities are expected to take the test. Additional staff are required to meet state requirements, meaning substitutes and some, not all staff members can proctor testing. So this requires planning to meet the needs of all of our students. And a really important note I want to make is that around the middle of April, this is when we really start gearing out to plan for the next year. We start looking at our class placements, we start looking at teachers at each grade level, and so really we need to think about what the fall is going to look like. Because we, I feel like we have got to start putting our energy into the new year a little bit. So really, kind of keep it open to those discussions moving forward. What is that going to look like? Are we offering virtual in the fall and simultaneously offering in-person? All those decisions are going to have to be made, and I know they're tough decisions to make, but they're crucial in our planning, because right now we are using the current resources we have teaching both modalities. And I want to say, I, I think they're doing a great job. Our virtual teachers are really, you know, we took that virtual world on, and they've done a really, really good job of it. Now, we want to bring our in-person people back. And the only way we really can do that is if, if we're not going to follow the health mitigation plan, because we do not have staffing just to add or create new classes. So either the choice is going to be, there are going to be twenty-five kids in a class, and that's going to be okay, or we're going to have to really look at really just changing the whole instructional program from, from, the whole scheme up from virtual into in-person. Just keep a note, I mean, the end of the third marking period is March twenty-sixth. We have, I know someone had made the mention, you wanted to possibly look at April twelfth. April twelfth really doesn't really align with our academic calendar. At April twelfth, there'll be seven weeks of instruction left for school. So that's an important note to make too, because not only do we have SOL testing, but we also have to do testing for our K through two numeracy assessments and our PALS assessments as well. So. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Collins?
How many in the elementary level, all, all three schools, are, how many students are on the waiting list?
I'm not sure, I'll hear from you. So I have six kids on the waiting list right now, and I can tell you I'm going to have a lot more, because if they think that, some parents have asked if they're coming a four-day week, and I've had these tough discussions, I'm going to be honest with parents, because they're like, hey, that's not what you told us. You told us it was going to be this plan, and now you're thinking about changing the plan. So it kind of puts us in, in that situation. I have, I have five on a waiting list right now across the grade levels, and I will not be able to accommodate all five of them, because we're full at capacity at one of the grade levels.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, Ms. Collins.
I have more questions. Go ahead.
Just want to follow up to that. So how many of those five or six originally indicated they wanted to stay virtual and now want to return in person?
They all said that. And please know that we spent hours at the elementary level at the semester break, because we, I told, even people that we, we reached out to our priority learners. We, we offered, you know, in-person, please come, and they were like, no. And I made it very clear that if you give up your spot and you stay virtual, you're giving up your in-person spot, we're going to fill it with someone else that wants to come in, and that's what has happened.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, you had.
How many staff members do you have on medical leave in the elementary level? Not medically, medical exemption, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I have one more question whenever I turn again.
Sorry?
Go ahead, Mr. Collins, you finish your question.
Teachers or employees?
Not as wide as always.
Across all grades or just elementary schools?
Elementary schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Collins, you can finish your question.
So when we start talking about next year, is that the year of sixth grade is going to be moving on to the middle school?
Yes, we, we are hopeful we can transition the sixth grade to the middle school. Of course, you saw in the first draft that to do so, there are a number of positions that'll be needed to make that happen. So again, that'll be.
And so I'm just, my next line of question will be states then. So, thank you. So when the sixth grade moves out of the elementary, what will be the numbers per class? How, how many kids will be leaving, let's do that one, in all the elementaries?
It's around a hundred at each grade level. I think I have ninety-four, Sealston's over a hundred. I don't know. But I'll give you an example, Potomac, that gives me four classrooms. That's four class, I have four classes of sixth grade. And we're already doubled up in, in numerous across the buildings, and I have STEM that teaches on a cart. So it doesn't give us a lot of real estate, if you will.
Three hundred students gives space.
But that's division one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have some.
Okay.
Okay, so one of the most important things that you said is that you are current, in April, you will start planning for next year. So really, I'm thinking as a board, we need to come to some terms as far as what that's going to start looking like.
That would be very helpful.
Okay. So one thing that I, that I would like to question is, you repeatedly state that the, the student capacity is limited to fifteen. In some cases, it goes a little bit more than that. What specifically is driving that factor?
Want me to speak to that? Like, we have, I think in these discussions, you know, in, in the board discussions, we've talked about, in previous meetings, we talked about classrooms, the size of classrooms. We brought pictures of example classrooms with desks set up that I can remember. I think the median classroom, and again, our classrooms vary in size depending on the elementary school, but fifteen was kind of a number where we believe we could with integrity maintain at minimum three-foot distancing with the number, with fifteen desks in any classroom. If you simply just pick a classroom at random, the number will be close to fifteen, and given our elementary school classroom sizes, what we could accommodate and still maintain that three-foot distancing at a minimum.
So is fifteen the target across all three elementary schools?
That's been the general target, yes.
Okay, so we have also talked in the past, and Ms. Harris, so what is your smallest class size? Class size at your school?
Fifteen. You talk about, you talking about overall or in-person? What are you asking?
In-person, your smallest class size in-person.
My smallest class size is fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen plus.
Okay, so we, we've also discussed several times that Potomac has much smaller, and I have been to all three of the class, schools and seen the class size. And Potomac's classes are indeed much smaller, and they're in, they're attendance is much smaller as well. So, you know, first I'd like to question, why are we limiting fifteen at a larger class size in King George Elementary and Sealston? If the class size, the classrooms are larger, so we're able to attain greater than the three-foot distancing at the other schools.
I don't know that that's the case necessarily. I don't know how, we'd have to go measure and see and do a comparison in terms of square footage if we wanted to get down that granular. I think fifteen, again, the description I provided earlier, was fifteen was a, seemed to be a reasonable number of students per classroom regardless of the school. So that was really the target for planning that we used.
So, Mr. Monroe, I believe, I, I came to your school and we went and saw one of the classrooms in, was it the second grade wing? I get confused over there. But if I don't, if I remember correctly, you had as many as twenty desks in one classroom that was spaced accordingly, because you came, you had already set up a, a couple classrooms.
Keep in mind, that was a first grade classroom. It was one of the other type. And then even in my observations today, when I go to the upper grades, at one grade level with fourteen, it's tight. In order, again, trying to maintain that three feet, this is pushing sort of something.
So you're saying that your second grade pod classroom sizes are smaller than your third grade pod classroom sizes?
There are some classes on each of the pod that are smaller than the other. That is true.
There are some, but not all of them?
No.
Okay, so the classroom that I saw where you had, I don't remember if it was eighteen or twenty, there is possibility that you could still maintain additional students in those classrooms. Is that correct?
Correct. That is also what we call the purple pod, but that those classrooms are, students are smaller. Their kind, they're first grader, they're kindergarten. When I move on the other side of the building where the classrooms are minutely a little bit smaller, the students. When I move on the other side of the building where the classrooms are minutely a little bit smaller, the students are large.
But the desks are the same size, is that not correct?
Okay, but also you got to look at the whole instructional day. So they don't sit in that classroom all day. So if they go to specials, then those rooms have to be able to accommodate the numbers you have. So it, it's a lot of moving parts.
How many?
And then you want to be equitable, so you want to be able to at least be equitable across the schools, correct? So we don't want to bring one grade level in, one student.
I don't think we're equitable at this point in time.
Question, answer. So before the pandemic, how many students elementary were in, in the classes? Like, what was the average class size in the elementary with COVID pandemic?
Well, some of our classes were 26, 27 students.
Any additional questions for Ms. Harris, Mr. Monroe?
Yeah, I, I still have some more.
Ms. Panzer?
So, I, I'm going to be repeating myself this throughout the night, I'm sure, because, you know, we're, we're not reinventing the wheel here. And I, you know, I've been to Florida, unfortunately. Um, and I, I walked into some of the schools and I've seen them, and they have a program, you know, where they're in school 100% and they're virtual and they're hybrid. I'm not sure how they do it, I was a little confused. But, you know, we have other states. I know Illinois and Iowa, North Carolina, Georgia, uh, and if we even go into Virginia, we've got St. Charles City, I think it's called City. We have Hanover, we have, um, Prince George. Um, and we have some other districts that are providing all of these services without having to have an, an exuberant amount of teachers and making it work. So I am not understanding, you know, what would we need to do in order to be able to make this work? What are the limitations that we would have to look at as a board to say, okay, we are going to, um, discuss removing that limitation, whether it's a three-foot spacing? Or is it, you know, obviously we want to maintain masks, I believe that's kind of across the board. But what is it that we would have to do as a board to come up to a decision so that we can get that number up? And that we can get our students in school four days a week?
It's, it's distancing, that's the bottom line.
So that's the only thing that's holding us up right now is distancing?
And the virtual modality. You're going to have to look at what your option is going to be there. Because we're currently using our staff to, you might have to look at doing a division-wide virtual school or, or looking at that a little bit differently. Right now, we are running both modalities at the same time with the current staff we have.
So that means a six-member team is now a three-member team because three of those teachers are now virtual teachers. So now we have to absorb those students, which can, those three live teachers. Whereas I said, our largest class could be 27 if you told the others, well, you're going to do 15. Where are the other students going?
So, and that's all predicated on distancing. So just to extend Mr. Monroe's math there, if you have now, you know, a five-member team at grade three, two of them now are, or three of them now are teaching virtually and two are teaching the remaining students who choose in-person. And across those two teachers, then you have, um, 50 students. So that's 25 for each classroom. Right now, as we started today, we've got, um, half of them coming one day and half coming another day. However, in our model, we have them coming for the full day. And in some of the divisions, I don't know all the states and everywhere, but I know that in, in several examples where they are hosting students four days a week, they've simply divided the four days into four half-days for each group. In our case.
That's not correct in the ones that I mentioned.
I'm not looking to debate you in the examples.
No, I'm just telling, that's not the ones that I, I mentioned.
Ms. Panzer, I'll let Dr. Benson finish this.
That's one way to divide it, is you certainly could use four days, but you would have to then have half-days because you can only host half of the number of students being the number of students 25 in, in both of these cases. So I come back to the distancing is the issue. And when things were, were, were not in the pandemic, we obviously had 25 students in each of those classrooms. And so, but we didn't have, obviously have the, uh, the need to adhere to the distancing standard. So really, the answer to your question, Ms. Panzer, is at the end of the day, when the distancing does not need to be the three feet at minimum with masks, or that when that, um, mitigating strategy is no longer, um, in effect, then we could then return to having 20-plus students in a, in a classroom. And we certainly look forward to that day. But that really is at the end of the day, that's the factor that, um, is going to prevent us from, well, would prevent us from, um, bringing 20-plus students per classroom now.
I have one more question, and maybe Ms. Zoszki can, um, answer this. But as far as the subs, you know, we can repeatedly state that there's a, a lack of subs. But, you know, I, I know that I've talked to three parents and they've said if they could get their kids into school, they would definitely be able to sub, and they had subbed in the past. So what, I, I mean, you probably know that the subs on a personal level, knowing which ones have kids in the schools. Based in the past few years, what is the percentage of subs that would actually have students within our, our, our schools?
I would. All the government had, not many, for past years.
Okay.
That have children in their schools.
Yeah. Because if we got back to school, then I think that we would not have as big of a sub issue because a lot more parents that had the children in the school systems would be able to provide.
I would say that the last couple of groups that have come through, most of them are, a lot of the ones that we've had are fresh out of college, um, who can't find jobs other places, so they are turning to subbing. And they, those, those applicants do not have children.
They're retired.
Some of them are retired. Hannah Paul.
Just curiosity.
Addie Her, getting her in this week to last as her, but.
Have we actually done any advertisement for subs?
We sure have. In fact, there are a couple on there tonight for group.
Great.
I'm sure I have another question for the H R.
Mr. Collins?
Um, how, so the medical exemption, the medical exempt employees, how long is that going to last and will that affect next year's schedule?
It could, it depends on the employee's medical situation.
So we go.
We have some that just went on medical exemption. They weren't on medical exemption because their medical needs changed. And I'll say pregnancy is one of them.
So you're including the ones that have gone on maternity leave as those medical exemptions?
If they are out right now and their returning to leave is not started, if the doctor has said it's in your best interest to be at home because they are pregnant.
Right.
Their returning to leave wasn't beginning.
So is there a way to determine how many of these, um, medical exemptions are directly related to COVID? I think that'd be important to know.
So.
So we don't know when medical exemptions will be over?
Well, as long, in the context of the pandemic, as long as the pandemic or the state of emergency is in effect, then there would be, um, then, then we would be sensitive to those, to the needs of those employees who have.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm trying to understand it because we're talking about August and, you know, this is.
I guess some of that, honestly, I think a lot of that was, is connected to, um, the length of the pandemic or the state of emergency associated with the pandemic. It may also, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it may also involve the Department of Labor and Industries, Virginia Dole, uh, and their emergency regulation that I think they put out, um, when this began.
It's not federal. Federal regulation.
No, that's the state exemption, state. We can find that, we can look at, uh, do some research as far as the regulation. But I do my best guess for you this evening, Mr. Collins, would be, as long as we are in a state of emergency associated with the pandemic, then conditions that would qualify an employee, um, for, for medical consideration would remain. And rightly so, I want to make sure that I say that. I think we, um, you know, we discuss, um, our staffing capacity. In the past, we've talked about, um, from a numbers, obviously not individual people, about those who need that accommodation. I think we, you know, I just think we need to be sensitive to the fact that these folks are not choosing, uh, the conditions that are, are qualifying them for consideration. So I just, I want to be sensitive to that as well.
I wasn't being nonsensical.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting.
I was trying to gather information for planning. Just, I'm sorry, one more question. The 28 that are on medical exemption at the elementary that we discussed several meetings ago about duties, how is that, how's that working?
Most of our medically exempt staff are working in our virtual model. So that, so anything that requires to be done, uh, duties in-person, then we're taking the slack of that. So we're doing lots of duties.
Right.
One example is public school.
And I did ask what the hours that were, but I never got the answer to that. How many hours of, of, of those?
Well, just come, come check it out, come see it. I mean, we've done curbside now in the morning, so we need more staff out there to do timber checks, get kids out the cars. We've done curbside pickup, which was new at our two schools. Sealston already had that in place, require staffing for that. Um, buses, getting kids off the buses, temper checks, it's just the day-to-day operation duties. Supervision in the hallways when we need it, coverages in the lunches. It's just a lot of moving parts as the day moves on, so. But we, we just have to, we have to accommodate for it.
The medical exempt employees don't have duties.
Not in-person, I know, they, they're, they're doing small group instruction, they're doing their virtual classes during the day, and they will pick up wherever I need. So I try to, the day's full, so they're just not in-person doing duties.
Yeah, well, so if they're not doing duties, are they taking on additional instruction?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, are they, is it across the board where everyone's doing the same amount of, of duties?
We are, we're doing our best to work as a team, so that's what we're doing.
Don't be fussy with me.
I'm not, I'm just answering a question.
All right, all right, Mr. Collins. Ms. Oliver, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, just, I, I have a comment, um, and I asked Ms. Harris this already, but I just kind of want to make it clear that we hear a lot about this waitlist, and a lot of these students opted for virtual, the last opportunity that they had, given the surveys, and now want to come back. So they were not accommodated in the original data gathering, the original numbers. Also, the amount of scheduling that has gone into all across the division of getting even, who are getting back into school is obviously a tremendous amount of work and a lot of effort, and y'all have worked very hard to, with, even given the constraints that Ms. Harris has mentioned, and I'm sure they exist in the other upper levels as well, to go through all that again for seven weeks left of school, disrupt, change teachers, ha- have students who change their whole schedules around with seven weeks left, once we get back from spring break, with April 12th date that we had talked about, is just, doesn't seem feasible to me. That's my comment.
All right, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Hoff, do you have any comments?
Yes, I, I do have a comment. And, uh, I, I guess the first thing I need to say is, is a huge thank you for this effort, for, uh, getting, um, the big picture in terms of what it would take to go the next step. Because I, I think we had, we had to ask the question. Regardless of each of, of our individual thoughts and feelings, each, each stage, each day, each week seems to change the picture a little bit. Maybe, maybe one piece is going up positively and other pieces going down negatively. Uh, I, I think your description of the moving pieces is, is really applicable, um, not only to the elementary piece, but to, to the whole system. I, I really, um, think that if it could be done, and that's sort of what we were hoping for, for, gee, there's, you know, you have 14 teachers hidden in the closets down there, uh, that you've just been keeping, you know, in reserve. But the fact is that we don't. We don't either have the physical space, as you all have explored. We don't have the transportation space, apparently, from, from also what we've explored. And the, the teacher limitation, uh, I mean, in, in good times, we're struggling. Uh, Ms. Zoszki is always struggling to see qualified, certified teachers. And although I, I certainly welcome the fact that parents want to help out, parents are not, and perhaps more discovering that they are not necessarily qualified and, and eager to be teachers or, or supervisors of students. So I want to thank you for this effort. I, I, I think it has answered a lot of my questions and a lot of the questions I've been getting about why aren't students in school right now? And the fact is that students are in school right now and that we're planning. And I, I am, uh, eager to see what we're going to come forward with in terms of summer and, um, fall. Uh, and I know you're already starting to think and work on those. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you.
I have a comment, not a question now.
All right, Mr. Collins.
So the, the waiting list bothers me. I understand that people make choices. And, uh, you know, everybody makes choices in life and has to live by those choices. But the 15 elementary that I know of already that are on a waiting list, that's the number I, I have. I, 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 I don't think in this country, in this time, that any child should be on any waiting list to go to in-person school. That's my opinion, that's my comment. And the reason I was asking about these, all these different numbers is I was, I was, I'm, I'm basing in- information based on fact, you know? What is the fact of the amount of folks that are on medical and what are their responsibilities? And, and what is, you know, the square, uh, fact? So if there's a way that we could change a number from 14 to, um, 14.5, you know, could we then allow more in-person, maybe the 15, somehow that number could be 15 eventually, somehow? So that's why I was asking all these numbers, um, so to deal with the facts. I don't think so.
Certainly, Ms. Harris.
It's not normal.
Well, please, I mean, our intent is not to have a waiting list either. So I do appreciate you, Ms. Hoff, and, and given that, because we have worked very hard in, in all this program. And please realize, today is the first day of blue, we haven't even had gold yet. So I don't even know, make sure that, you know, we're basing on the data that we were provided, the conversations we've had with parents. So at the end of this week, I don't know if someone doesn't show up or they change their mind or whatever else again, that soon as we have that in-person spot available, we're going to put kids in there. I mean, please understand that. And not all of our classrooms are quite at 15, there's a couple in sixth grade, I've got 16, 17 in there. So we are doing the best that, that we can with this. I don't, I don't want that message to be in the community or here at the board.
That message is not the message that I'm broadcasting to you. Not at all. I'm just trying to figure out, from a discussion from a board level, what we can do to assist there be more kids, at least that 15 kids. I, I'm, I know what you're all doing, I see what you're all doing, and I appreciate what you're doing. So don't, don't, for the last seven and a half years, I've supported everything you're all doing. Okay?
We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Collins, thank you. All right, so I guess I will say, I know, um, thank you both, Ms. Harris and Mr. Monroe, for being here to continue on with the due diligence, um, it is very much appreciated. I mean, I think we heard again tonight that there's obviously been a lot of work that's gone into developing, implementing the current instructional models. So it also sounds like, considering where we are in the academic year, that it makes the most sense to focus on teaching material and preparing for next year, um, and not reworking the entire instructional model yet again, considering we just launched our three-through-six today and are about to launch seven through 12 in two weeks. So, um, I'm certainly in favor of continuing forth with what we have currently implemented. And I know you're all working through that daily and beyond, um, to make that happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
We appreciate you.
I did have one more question. And I, I do think that, I, I know the answer to this, but, so is, if teacher A teaches a class in, um, B, then they'll have a class in, or in blue, then they'll have a, a class in gold as well, right? So they'll have that one class is divided up into two classes over the week, right? Okay, just want to make sure I understood that correct.
Madam Chair, while Ms. Collins comes down, I want to again thank, uh, Mr. Monroe and in particular, Ms. Harris. You know, today was the first day of school for a good number of students. And so I know this weekend was pretty stressful for Ms. Harris as she prepared. And, um, it's not easy for, um, folks to come up and, and speak and try to support your discussion, please know that. Um, and I so appreciate you, I'm sure, worrying about it all weekend, getting up early today. Um, and I so appreciate you, I'm sure, worrying about it all weekend, getting up early today to receive kids and then taking time out to support the discussion tonight. So thank you, and you appreciate it. Ms. Collins?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson, Mrs. Rinko, and our general public. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update to the Middle School Return to Learn Plan. In the packet that you were provided, you can see our second slide shows the plan that is going to be implemented beginning March 22nd. Where our students will be on a hybrid in-person returning. Blue group will come two days per week, Monday and Tuesday afternoons, and then participate virtually Thursday and Friday mornings. And then the reverse will be true with the gold group, where they will, gold group will participate virtually Monday and Tuesday mornings with their teachers and then come in person Thursday and Friday afternoons. For our virtual only students, they will participate Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday mornings virtually. All students will remain, um, asynchronous on Wednesdays. So we are looking forward to having students come in the building the Monday following spring break. The next two slides in your presentation include updated data for your consideration. On slide three, I wanted to outline the changes to in-person and virtual instruction ever since we began surveying our families back in July. And I presented some of this information to you when I was here on February 17th, and I wanted to break it out a little bit more for you to see. You know, as we've continued to reach out to our families that did not respond at all, as well as the number of continual parent requests that we received to update children's learning modalities. And you can see that as evidenced on that slide. In fact, in preparing for busing, we have updated transportation with over 60 changes to student learning modalities just since January 21st. And these are only the changes that represent primarily ones that involve the school bus. So we've had more than, more than that, so on to the next slide. So the next one up, it's giving you some updated data, showing you our number of medically exempt staff and then how those, um, remote only positions affect our student learners in the building. Um, as a result of vaccinations and changes in medical status, King George Middle School had six staff members that returned to the building today. And then we currently have nine teachers who will be teaching remotely. The second chart on that slide outlines the number of in-person students by blue and gold cohorts who will be accessing their teacher in a virtual setting and require adult supervision. The remote only teacher will still be teaching just from a remote location. Um, the blue and gold individual numbers represent the two-day in-person groups and then the combined number, the larger number, represents the impact if the board were to decide to combine to a four-day in-person model. So how does this impact us? On slide five, some impact to our daily operations. And you can see that I, I made the chart with some comparisons. Families made their decision to return in-person based on a two-day in-person hybrid option. The middle school plan was developed with student and staff safety at the forefront. The majority of middle school classrooms have an average of 11 to 12 student capacity using the six foot of physical distancing, which is what the middle school used in the development of our Return to Learn Plan. However, if you look in the chart, using three feet of physical distancing increases our classroom capacity to approximately 15 to 18 students, depending on the layout of the classroom. The average core class size for a hybrid in-person blue or gold group that will be returning in March ranges from nine, four to nine students per class period. Some of our elective class sizes are larger, ranging up to 20 students per class period. Combining both blue and gold cohorts will increase core class sizes significantly, ranging from approximately eight to 17 students per class period. And some elective classes would range up to 30 students per class period, because it's not an even 50/50 split. Supervision for remote only teachers ranges from, as you saw on the chart on the previous slide, 11 to 31 for hybrid in-person blue and gold per class period. Combining both blue and gold cohorts will increase the supervision needed significantly, ranging from 27 to 68 students per class period, who will require supervision and will be accessing their remote only teacher in a virtual setting. So I also included in the chart some other things for your consideration. And that is that we need to think about the increase in traffic with the combined cohort, because there would be more car riders and the potential need for more buses. I don't know if you've been by the middle school lately, but BDOT decided today to finally fix our entrance. Adds another hurdle, but that process is supposed to be completed by Wednesday. Thumbs up on that. Um, other considerations, um, with a combined cohort, there would be staffing needed for additional daily health screenings, since the number of students would essentially double. We would have an increased need for supervision throughout the day. And we would also have a limited ability to add in-person students necessitating a waiting list. Please note that all of the numbers displayed in this chart represent only those students whose families have already chosen an in-person option and that it, that that option provided was a two-day hybrid option. The division survey did not offer middle school families a four-day option. And as I previously noted during the February 17th boardwork session, our data shows that we could not support the number of students that were anticipated to request in-person learning in a four-day option. So parents were only able to choose from that two-person, two-day in-person option. Our final slide is the bell schedule that we will be implementing beginning March 22nd. And I would just like to thank the middle school staffed for all of their hard work, creativity, flexibility, and dedication to our middle school students and families. This has been a challenging year for everyone. And through it all, our middle school staffed continue to do what is best for our students. We are excited to be welcoming in-person students beginning March 22nd, and we ask that our families be patient as we shift to the new schedule and adjust to our new routines. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Any questions for Ms. Collins?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins?
How many students do you have on the waiting list?
Currently, right now, we are able to allow students to come in. So we don't have a waiting list, but we do have to look for each class across all six class periods. So every student request that we get, we look at how it impacts each one of their six classes and then.
Zero.
So I currently have zero on the waiting list.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions?
I do, so I, I'm a little confused, but that's okay. So are, are you saying that you have your teachers teach in-person a group of students in, in the morning and then she, she or he teaches them virtually in the afternoon?
It's the opposite of that.
Or whichever, yeah.
Our teachers are teaching virtually in the morning and in-person in the afternoon.
Is it the same group of students that they're teaching? That's where I'm confused. It sounded like.
Not exactly, not at the same time. So in the morning, on Monday, March 22nd, our teachers will have their gold in-person students participate in virtual instruction in the morning, along with their 100% virtual students. Those two groups will participate together in the morning. And then in the afternoon, the teachers will teach their in-person blue students the same lesson that afternoon.
So the students that are being taught in the afternoon are not being taught in the morning as well? That's what I'm trying to ask.
That's correct. So the students that come in person in the afternoon utilize the morning to work on assignments and complete asynchronous work.
So all of your teachers are teaching both in-person and virtual or majority?
That is correct. All of our students are remaining with their same teacher and it's the time of day when they receive instruction that is changing. So our teachers are essentially teaching the same lesson twice a day. Well, more than that. First period, second period, third period in the morning, and then first, second, and third period in the afternoon. And then Tuesday, it flips to fourth, fifth, and sixth.
So do you have any teachers that are medically exempt and can only teach virtual?
I have teachers that are medically exempt that can only teach virtual and they are teaching their cohorts in the morning virtually. And then there are students that are in-person. Those medically exempt teachers will teach those students virtually. So the students will use their device to access their teacher in a remote setting, meaning that they will watch them on the Chromebook and listen to them and participate, just like they are now, even if they're physically present in the middle school.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Ms. Oliver?
No questions, thank you, Ms. Collins.
Ms. Hock?
I don't think so, I mean, thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to say thank you, Ms. Collins. Is that any further questions that we missed? No, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and, uh, Dr. Boyd is also here from the high school. While he makes his way up, thank you, Ms. Collins, very much for your update.
Thank you, board members. Thank you again for the opportunity. To, uh, fill you in on some of the considerations we've made since we last met. Uh, Dr. Benson told me that some of the slides that I created didn't make it in the packet, but, uh, I do believe they're available up on the screen, so I can go over those with you guys quickly. Just advance if you could put those slides on. Maybe they didn't make it there either, huh? All right, no concern. Uh, just to give you guys an update on where we were since we last met. Uh, we left here and I went back to my administrative team and I asked them to take a really deep dive into what some other school divisions are doing across the state. So in the first slide that I was going to present to you this evening had about 15 school divisions on it. Uh, all of our local school divisions, here it is, right here.
Yeah.
Um, so you can see on the left-hand side of the table, you have the school divisions that we took a look at. In the middle, you'll see a brief summation of what those school divisions are doing based on the information that we acquired from their website. And then on the right-hand side, I can make this available to you all and it's a link to the plan that they have on their website. Okay, thank you, Dr. Benson. You can see, and this is what we've talked about, uh, a few times, on the secondary level, uh, this is what I've tried to explain in a number of ways. We all have the same instructional pie that we're trying to cut from. Uh, and you can see every one of those school divisions has decided to really cut that instructional pie up in different ways. For example, Orange County, you can see they have a, a hybrid plan in-person only one day a week, and they have students that are listed in group A, B, C, and D. Uh, Louisa, who, uh, the governor went to Louisa this week and was very proud of the, of the system they put forward. You can see that they have a blended learning model where students attend two days a week in-person and then participate in asynchronous activities outside of that. So we took a look, uh, at really just an array of different options that are being, uh, pushed out in secondary schools across the state. Uh, you see all of our local school divisions there. Many of the school divisions right now have a plan where they are teaching two days synchronously or in-person and then really three days of asynchronous activities. And there's some variation in there that you can see, uh, with certain school divisions. Falk here has one that's pretty unique. Uh, they, they'll be moving to a four-day-a-week plan starting in April. Uh, and as you guys know right now, our plan would include four days a week for our secondary students. Again, it all boils down to that instructional pie that we're going to cut up. We used to be able to dedicate that entire instructional pie to in-person students that came into the building to receive instruction. And now, uh, in the, you know, pandemic that we are experiencing right now, we're separating that instruction into two modalities. I think the other thing that, uh, many of us would appreciate after a year of participating in this type of instruction is the skill needed to effectively provide instruction in a virtual environment is diff- it's entirely different than what is needed to provide quality instruction in an in-person environment. A virtual teacher is focused on a screen, they're sedentary, they're trying to pick up on cues through tiny thumbnail pictures and find out how to, uh, encourage engagement with students. An in-person teacher is up out of the seat, moving around a classroom. Those two modalities sometimes have a difficult time setting on top of each other. The places where they do set on top of each other, you'll see, like our governor's school, have very advanced levels of technology that provide an ability to do that a little more seamlessly. So, um, I just wanted to show you what other school divisions are doing. I want you to know that we are continuing, continuing to study, uh, and researching and taking a look at different ways different school divisions are doing things. Uh, John, if you could put on the next slide, please. So again, this is our plan, all students, all of our students, and again, it's, uh, about 39% of our students right now. Since we had the last school board meeting, we've had about 20 to 30 students that have called the school and requested a change in modality. It's really about 50/50, uh, some wanting to go back to virtual, some wanting to go back to in-person. Uh, we do not also on the secondary level have a waitlist. We, uh, have a rolling and will continue to accept those as they come. It's just a little different of a, of a beast on the secondary level. We can easily change students between modalities. It becomes a little more challenging when they go from virtual to in-person. But with 39% of our students wanting to come in-person right now, we feel pretty safe about being able to accept more students into the building. We created this a plan originally, uh, with the assumption that about 50 or 60% of our kids could return to in-person instruction and right now we're hovering in the 30s. So, uh, this is the plan that we would like to move forward with. This is the one that we presented to you guys, uh, two weeks ago. What this plan provides for is focused instructional time, uh, instructional time that will be unencumbered by, um, supervision needs or other modalities that would have to be juggled at the same time. So this is, uh, similar to the se- to the middle school, our secondary stu- our, uh, virtual students would attend school in the morning for 45-minute blocks. They would attend all four of their blocks back-to-back in the morning. Our in-person students at that time would participate in asynchronous activities in the morning. There were, well, we would all break for our lunch break and then in the afternoon, those same teachers would teach a different group of students. Again, that 39% that want to come in-person, they would teach them for 45-minute blocks in the afternoon. That would be focused instructional time virtually in the morning and then focused on our in-person students with those different sets of tools that will be needed for those different modalities in the afternoon. Last slide, John. Again, from, what I took from the last meeting is if the desire of the board would be to move to a, uh, you know, not only a four-week schedule like we, a four-day schedule like we have now, but one that would increase the school day, instead of taking the instructional day like we're currently doing and dividing it in half, uh, we could, and divide the instructional block in half. I'll, I'll tell you guys again that this is not, as far as instruction is concerned, this is not the preferred method. But if the desire is to increase the instructional day, this is how it would look and this is how the times would break down. So again, instead of breaking the instructional day down, we're breaking each block into a, a dedicated time to serve in-person students and a dedicated time to serve virtual students. Uh, but again, I couldn't stress enough that, um, we would prefer to go forward with the plan that we presented, uh, two weeks ago. So I can stop there and certainly answer any questions that is.
All right, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Collins?
How many, um, yes, how many medical exemptions? Thank you. That's all the questions. I do have a comment after questions.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Ms. Danz, here.
So, um, I understand that not wanting to teach virtual and in-person at the same time, but right now is our own. I understand that not wanting to teach virtual and in-person at the same time, but right now is our only stumbling block if we were to do that. Not having the technology in order to present the virtual kids up on a large screen or, you know, how it's normally done in some of these other schools and also in colleges.
Yeah, I think the technology is a big pitfall. And again, we have, and for years, done it successfully with our governor's school that have tracking cameras and different technology that would allow for different levels of engagement. Right now, to solicit feedback in Google Meet requires a certain level of focus by that teacher to that computer screen that would be hard to accomplish if they were also walking around a classroom and fielding questions from students in the classroom. The technology would help us bridge that gap a little bit, but I mean, I'm, that's a really big investment, I think, to take care of everybody, and that's outside of my realm of, you know, understanding. But I think we're all hoping that this is not a long-term thing that has to happen. I can echo what my other principal said, and I hope we're back in school in August with full classrooms.
Any further questions, comments?
Comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, hold on. Ms. Hock?
No, no questions or comments.
Okay.
I want to thank them for the chairs. I can't tell you how many times I go home and for like three days I can't move. So this is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Certainly. Mr. Collins?
So as we start ending this school year, we're going to need to have a discussion in regards to graduation. So that's not that far away. And even though last year's graduation was great, I attended it. It was a great idea and it worked very well. I don't know that's what folks kind of graduation they want this year. So we need to start considering, I talked to Dr. Boyd before the meeting, giving you numbers of where the stadium could be and so forth. But I think we need to start discussing graduate, an in-person graduation.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment?
Certainly, Ms. Hock.
I think there has always, in the past, been a graduation committee who have worked incredibly hard each year in previous years. And I would bet that there's a graduation committee in place as we speak. Is there not, Dr. Boyd?
Yes, ma'am. We've met a number of times already and Dr. Lowe, Mr. Robinson, Ms. Weinstein was here earlier, are all part of that committee that work tirelessly. Mr. Macmair has also done a lot for that committee. We met last week. We are rolling and trying to figure out, we've again explored with other school divisions. Again, Louisa, looks like they're going to do something similar to what we did last year because of space capacity. They have put caveats in there such as if restrictions change, then they would consider shifting to in-person ceremony. Right now for us, the regulations from the governor are outdoors is thirty percent or a thousand, whichever number is lower. So based on what I've got from Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Fisher, that puts our stadium capacity at about four hundred. So we've got usually about three hundred and twenty-five graduates, give or take. That would be one, if we, if right now under current restrictions, that would be one ticket per grad. Just to give you guys an idea.
If you didn't have it in the stadium, parking lot, or some other opportunity, or Mary Washington College or something, there might be an opportunity to have it in person. So I would just like that to be on the plate because it's coming down the road. So they can't plan if we don't tell them, you know. So I think that we need to have that discussion very soon. Because we don't want to do what happened with school, you know, change, change things, you know what I mean?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hock? I don't recall a time in the past that the board has been in the approval or disapproval capacity for the graduation process. Dr. Benson, is that correct or is this a decision between you and Dr. Boyd and his committee?
It's certainly been, it's a school-level planning. But I do recognize that, you know, we're in very unique and uncharted waters, have been since last year. I know, and I have great confidence that Dr. Boyd, knowing that he and I talked at length last year, that he and his committee will, it's already on their plate. Conversation's already moving forward and it's really just a matter of creating consonance with whatever the governor's order or whatever is in place from a regulatory standpoint at that time. And I'm sure that we will look to maximize to the extent we possibly can the opportunity for families to celebrate graduation.
But we, I mean, you don't want to start them planning something that won't happen, vice versa. So, I mean, if it's money involved as far as rental of Mary Washington or something, it does need into a board-level discussion.
Well, certainly, should it come to a point where we would need board approval for a fee or something like that? And again, I agree with you, Ms. Collins. We don't want to put anything out there and already we're discussing things in more detail that may confuse, you know, there's no there's no arrangement of Mary Washington versus, so.
Right.
I just want to make that clear publicly because I know folks are listening, but.
But I just want to make sure that we're not looking in a box, you know, to have out here, we don't have the capacity according to the rules and regulations of the state. There are options, and if it has to do with money, we need to know it sooner than later. And my feel is constituents are extremely interested in in-person graduation, and that's why I bring this in front of the board during this time of discussion.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Collins. Any further comments, questions? So I say thank you, Dr. Boyd. I appreciate that you've done and presented some extensive research into how other high schools are operating right now. You know, you clearly reminded us that the instructional model about to be offered by our high school here on the twenty-second is very much in line with other divisions around the Commonwealth. And in fact, it seems that we may even be more responsive in some ways to parent concerns about the challenges associated with asynchronous days, given that we'll be offering live instruction four days a week for both in-person and virtual learners. So I know there have been a lot of questions about why we haven't considered having our teachers teach their in-person and virtual students concurrently. But what your presentation tells me is that despite what other schools are doing, you feel very strongly that teaching concurrently is not the way to go. So I respect your professional opinion in there for and in favor of continuing forth with instructional model that's currently planned. So, alright, thank you, Dr. Boyd.
So I don't think that he says that teaching concurrently is not the way to go. I mean, all of these other schools are doing that. So I don't understand that comment.
So my comment is that based on his presentation, despite the fact that there was a long list of schools that are teaching concurrently, the recommendation remains that we continue forth with the instructional model that's previously been developed by the administration, which was not teaching concurrently. So it tells me that despite what others are doing, we are actually thinking outside the box and doing what makes the most sense for our school division.
Which is not anything like what these other twelve are doing. That makes a lot of sense. Okay.
So, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins?
There's more than likely another ton of money coming down the pike. And so I bring some of this information or discussion to the board so we can have it in the back of our mind if we, you know, if we need those funds, you know, for those types of events or to help out the elementary to get those in-person on, you know. So that's why I'm trying to inject this information in there because there's going to be more opportunity with funds to do other, to do things.
Understood. And I believe we.
For allowing me a time to re-comment.
Yes, certainly. Okay, thank you. It's ringing of the bell apparently. Alright, so I think that concludes our discussion items. So we'll move on to our information items. Do we have any committee reports?
So we're not going to discuss anything about in-person? I mean, we're just.
As well, we've done a bit of discussing.
Okay, nobody wants to discuss further as far as how we're going to move forward? What are we going to, what are we thinking? What are we planning? What are we going to ask for next year? You know, I mean, people want answers. They want to know what's going on. What is, and you know, it's obvious that, you know, the board has, you know, not listened to the public and has not given, you know, a lot of options. And, you know, now they're wanting to know what's going on and what, you know, I'm getting a lot of questions is what are we looking at next year? You know, I didn't hear Dr. Boyd say that, you know, concurrent teaching is definitely out of the question. I heard that, you know, there's a possibility that, you know, we need some technology to help that. I'm, we're just going to end the conversation. I'm not sure that we're done having a discussion.
So we've done a lot of.
What's the plan moving forward? What are we going to tell the public tomorrow? What are they getting out of what we just heard today? We're just going to start with these plans come March twenty-second, twenty-ninth, whatever it is?
That is what the board has voted on, so.
And then what are we planning on doing for the next year?
Well, that is, that has not yet been a discussion item for the board, so it's certainly something we've heard that needs to, Ms. Pants here, let me finish. It's clearly something that needs to be discussed, so we will put it on a discussion item in a future meeting. Ms. Tolliver?
Just a comment because I asked Dr. Boyd about that today in a separate conversation. What was the state, what was it looking like from the governor's perspective? And apparently there's a bill that's not even been through the whole process yet to determine what the options are for virtual versus in-person for the fall. So we have to wait some until those decisions are made on a state level. So it's really premature to discuss August tonight, in my opinion.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hock?
I think our agenda specifically called for the information that we requested from the staff about possible expansion of in-person for this year. And I think we had to ask the question, you're exactly right. We need to explore. But we have received a very much more than adequate information piece about the answer being not yet. And we're clearly all eager for students to come back to school. And I don't think you should personalize this to the extent that you have. I do think that we need to say to the public that we do have in-person instruction happening right now. It's been going very smoothly from the reports from all the staff, from the custodial staff to the drivers to the they have had problems, but they've dealt with the problems and in a timely manner. And that's what we heard tonight, that this next phase will be done. We've asked the questions, we've gotten the answers, we're identifying the lessons learned and then moving on to new plans. And yes, you are right, we do need, we're getting huge questions about next year. But we don't have, as Ms. Tolliver said, we don't have the information from either CDC or the federal level or the state level or even our own level of discussion. I think it is not premature to ask for that to be begun, but I don't think that discussion needs to happen tonight. We need to focus on answering questions about what is happening this week as we're opening grades three to six and on March twenty-second, when we open the next phase. That's my opinion in terms of concurrent teaching of virtual and physical. I've done a lot of research into it and not that I'm an educator, I'm a social worker. But the opinions that I've read from NEA, from the state associations and from the teacher associations have all found that that is not, in general, the best way to provide connections between students and staff. And without that connection, connections can be made virtually, but not simultaneously. It's like patting your head and rubbing your tummy, which I can never do. The point is that we need to focus on what we're doing well right now and expanding that. And I hope and pray with all my heart that we are going to be looking at a typical opening for fall. And in the meantime, we've got discussions to happen about learning loss and catch-up and programs for the summer. Those need to come on the agenda also, but in a timely fashion.
So, Madam Chair.
Mr. Collins?
So I did not hear from the principals, not yet. I didn't hear that as the overwhelming message. The message was, from my perspective, is that this is what's, excuse me, this is what's going to happen. This is their plan. And this is their hurdles they need to get over to expand or to keep it continual. The CDC puts out stuff all the time and I have to say that we don't really follow their guidelines at times. And the NEA and the Teachers Association, no matter how much damage this will cost me, they do not, they are a very important part of the puzzle, but they are not the leaders of this division. That is our elected job and not to be run by associations or any other type of organization. So that probably ought to be enough comments for me tonight.
I would like to make a comment. So our teachers may not be the leaders of our school district, but they're certainly the leaders in the classroom and to disregard that, I think, is doing. Yes, as, yes, I think that's.
They need to be a priority.
Right.
They're not, I'm not saying disregard, but.
Not a priority.
So they do need to be a priority.
The parents need to be a priority and the children. The children are a priority. Our code of conduct states that the children are a priority.
So if we fail to pay, give proper respect and priority to our teachers, we will not have teachers.
I don't see how we're not giving them proper respect. I mean, we haven't, we haven't been in school and we're listening to everything and giving them everything that they want. How is that not giving them respect? I don't understand.
Okay. So I would, I think this conversation is eerily reminiscent of conversations we had about nine months ago when we were trying to decide whether or not we needed to start planning for our reopening this past fall. A lot of these similar conversations about waiting for guidance from the state. I do think that, I agree that it would be in our, everyone's best interest to begin thinking about what options would at least be viable for the fall, regardless of what the, where we are at that point in time, whether, regardless of what the state guidance comes out as. I think there are a lot of lessons learned that could be, we could capitalize on and put plans forth, whether it's we need additional technology resources or what, so that if there's a requirement and where the world is still in a similar situation as we are now, which we all hope is not the case. But there, if virtual instruction is still a thing in the fall, there's certainly lessons that can be learned about hybrid models and teaching methods. And we also stand to gain a lot from the current reopenings that we are doing with our three-through-six and our seven-through-twelve to learn from, to be better prepared for the fall. So I do believe that is all, that is all planning and conversations we can begin to have so that we are prepared when that guidance does come out. We've done our homework and we know a little bit about maybe what the best way to approach it is.
So we are in a much different situation this year, this spring, than we were last spring. We know a lot more about the virus. We know a lot more what our capabilities are. We have, you know, we've treaded these waters. You cannot compare last spring to this spring. And, you know, so I don't agree with that for one. And, you know, I didn't hear the teacher say that it's absolutely not possible. You know, back in the fall, we had Ms. Harris say that they were ready. They were ready. In her professional opinion, they were ready. And we didn't go by her professional opinion. Now, all of a sudden, we've heard this twice, that their personal professional opinion is what's driving our decisions. So I have a really hard time not understanding how we can't continue to discuss what are our hurdles? What do we have to overcome in order to get our kids back into school longer days, more days? Because those hurdles are more than likely going to be there unless by some miraculous, you know, happening that everything is lifted and we just go back to normal, which is a possibility. Anything's possible in this world today. But I think that we need to discuss, you know, what those hurdles are, and they've presented those hurdles to us tonight. And we need to continue to discuss them and whether or not we. And whether or not we can have kids come back, you know, April 12th for four days a week is, you know, yet to be determined.
Madam Chair, I spoke with a, a former school board member and I asked the question, I said, so how, how can we, how can we make everybody happy? That was the question. And, and the person said to me, you have to have buy-in from all the groups. So we are still not at that point where we have buy-in from all the groups. So I think that if we, you know, I was talking about these numbers and all that to get, so we can make citizens satisfied, teachers satisfied, that everything will be good. We still haven't reached our buy-in for our community yet.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hock.
I, I am very willing, Ms. Pansiera and Mr. Collins, to stay here as long as we need to tonight to discuss what we can discuss productively. If we have the information, if we, if there are things we need to identify, but to simply rehash, well, Ms. Harris said this, or Ms. Harris said that, or Dr. Boyd said this, or I thought this. Rehashing is not productive. If we can have, I'm sorry, conversations that identify what we need to do next, I'm very, very willing to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Any further discussion?
I think we have something that we need to identify and what we need in order to move forward. I mean, we, we heard the obstacles that we need to, you know, overcome in order to get our kids back into school. So are we just going to ignore those obstacles and just wait to see if the governor's going to release the, the emergency, you know, order and, and just ride it out for, for how long? A month, two months, three months? You know, I mean, I think the public needs to know that. What, what is our plan? What is our plan moving forward?
I'd only add to your conversation that, exactly what I said in terms of the question, and that is, the, the primary variable in play that is predating the dividing of students into smaller numbers is the distancing, the distancing guideline as a mitigating strategy. That really is it. I mean, if you think about it, if there were no distancing, then there would be no, no prompt to divide students into smaller groups, because that's really where it all begins. And you, we can talk about, you know, tracking cameras and some of the, the Tannberg and the, the types of devices that are in use. And I want to, I think it's a good point to make, as far as the governor's school, you know, those have been used for several years because of a, the need to staff in one location, but reach students in multiple locations when, when the governor's school, you know, at its inception was split between Stafford and King George, you know. So that's really the, the, the origin of the use of that level of technology. But I think that's the fair answer to your question, Miss Pansera, is that as long as you have that distancing guideline that we need to follow with integrity, that's what's predating the division of students in blue and gold or half-days. That's really the hurdle. You know, the other things were, were, were ancillary aspects, but in terms of pedagogical needs that would make things, but it, it wouldn't matter, even if we had tracking cameras, if we still had to distance students, we would still need to divide students into smaller groups. Now, I will say that the bill that Ms. Oliver references is on the governor's desk. Should it be signed? And I, I expect it personally to be signed. You know, that does prompt school divisions throughout Virginia to offer in-person schooling to the maximum extent possible in terms of the, the required number of hours and that type of thing. It does allow that a virtual option may be afforded. But it's really written in, I think the spirit of it, it's written so that the default for everybody is in-person. You know, unless there are factors that would require a virtual option for a family select. And even then, if a family selects a virtual option and a student is faltering on yet-to-be-developed benchmarks at the DOE, then school divisions have then leveraged, according to this bill, to then bring that student back to an in-person saying to make sure that he or she is successful. So I think on the horizon, that is a major variable. That legislation, once approved then, will help guide in part the discussion about next year to, to a great extent. Certainly the lessons learned are the, to this point and what we learn moving forward between now and the end of the year. That's going to be important information to then develop the model for next year. And I think what you heard from Ms. Harris say about the elementary level is that, you know, they've worked very hard and they've, 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 they've staffed according to the responses they received on that survey. Once we get into planning for next year, you know, it's a reset. And so that we have then greater latitude to re, to undo some of the staffing changes they made to begin with the assumption that the majority of students will be coming in person, which is certainly what we hope. And then we can look at options in terms of accommodating those who need a virtual option.
I think any future surveys need to be vetted by us before you send them out. I think there's been some serious loopholes in there.
The, in, in further discussion, so the CD, the recommendations are the six-foot, unless, and, and local school boards can decide, there's mitigating, they have mitigating factors to have that space closer. So at this point, we're still operating on the six-foot. I mean, if you give numbers, six to three-foot, and if you drop them down by a half, how many more students could be, you know what I'm saying, by the numbers? How many more students could you get into that space and the building? But that would have to come from the board to change the guidance to Dr. Benson.
So it is three-foot and masks in several classrooms.
Yeah, so we have the plastic, we have the ionization. So what, I mean, can we, can we relax some of the criteria?
Ms. Oliver.
So, at this point, we have a plan. We had just heard it all again tonight. It was mentioned that there definitely are hurdles, there definitely are things that I think we can explore moving forward. But you also heard how disruptive it would be to change the schedule yet again, to figure out staffing patterns yet again. As I stated earlier, we only have eight or so weeks of school left. I don't think that kids want to change teachers again at the elementary level. At the high school level, Dr. Boyd pointed out that they're only at 39% in-person, so I don't think that's a huge issue. Middle school's about, seems to me about breaking even with where they are with virtual and in-person. So we have a few in the elementary schools who would like to be in the classrooms. Again, didn't make that choice. I hope we can accommodate that choice as soon as possible. But to talk about developing a whole nother plan for April, when we've been accused for the last six months of changing our minds every two weeks, I think is a bit much. I think we can certainly look at the challenges, see what maybe we need to do fiscally for next year's budget if need be. But at this point, I really think, and according to the experts, which I'm not an educator, I'm a social worker as well. I think that we need to allow them to run their buildings the way they've made plans and decisions to do so. And I think that's where we are, and that is the plan currently.
I understand, I think that Ms. Pansera, the, the, what I, what I'm hearing is that it's not that she wants to change the plan, she wants to increase the plan.
That would change it as well.
But I don't, I don't mean change it from the, the blue gold and all that stuff, but to, to allow more occupancy.
That would still be a change, Mr..
Well, like, if you, if you did, it wouldn't change the blue gold, it would, if you changed the amount of feet that you have to be, that, that would just get those students in there and maybe other students that want to go. And then you'd have to deal with the transportation issues. I don't think it's unreasonable for Ms. Pansera to make that discussion.
Say it was unreasonable, I just don't think that there's, um, the resources and the availability of staff, which is a resource. And I think we have a plan and we need to move forward with what the plan as it stands currently for March 22nd for the middle school and high school and, and let the educators decide. They are at three feet in a lot of classrooms, I've said that. We can't, we can't change that anymore. But then you bring in more students and you got to bring in more teachers and we're just back to the same.
You don't need to bring in more teachers if you lax the three feet, that's the point.
We have, well, relaxing the three feet is not something I'm willing to consider.
I agree. And so I believe, you know, we heard this evening about how, you know, in response to questions about how many students are, are currently on waitlists. It sounds like, if I remember correctly, there were none on waitlists at the middle school or the high school. And so there were a few at the elementary school levels, which is certainly an issue. We would prefer not to have students on waitlists, but the increasing, if, I also am not in support of not abiding by CDC recommendations and reducing the distancing. But it sounds like even if that were the case, there are, there are, we are currently being able to accommodate most of the students that do want to be in-person, so I, and the planning that has been done, as Ms. Collins mentioned, in accordance with the surveys that have already gone out, even allowing more students to come back is just going to, it, it is additional planning. We do, it is a change. We do have a plan that we voted on at our last meeting, which was to continue forthwith the grades three through six beginning yesterday, or today, and seven through 12 on March 22nd. And to assess a K through 12 return four days a week, and that's what we've done. And it sounds like that the recommendation from our administrators are that, based on where we are in the academic year and a variety of other matters, the recommendation is not to pursue yet another change for this year, for this year.
So the 15 kids in the elementary, it's good to hear that the zero in middle school and zero in high school are, you know, waiting list there. But the 15 in the elementary level, you know, that, some might be a few, but if it was my child, that would be very important to me. And I think they have a, I think they have, I, I wouldn't say a right, but they have a, we have a duty to allow them to be in-person. Because that's what, you know, I, I don't think that in this country, you should be on a waiting list for education, but that's my opinion. So, if they can accommodate them somehow, I, I would, and I, I would like to see how we could accommodate them to assist.
I'd agree with that.
I don't want to reiterate, I think that's what they, and I know for a fact, in fact, just the other day, I got an email from a parent thanking because her two children now moved off of that queue in one school and are now attending in person. So I know the principals are working in good faith to monitor when there is space. They notify the very next person who was on that queue.
I just wonder what we can do as a board to assist in that.
Okay, any further discussion? All right. So, we will move on now to our information items. Committee reports, do we have any? Ms. Pansiera?
No.
Ms. Hock.
Yes, ma'am, I do. The gifted advisory committee met via Zoom, of course, and we had great attendance by both parents and staff. The chair and secretarial positions were elected. And thank you to Ms. Rinco for stepping up and serving on that committee. The updates from Mrs. Higgins were as follows. The second grade screening for students has been done for all students in-person and any family who chose to bring their student in to have them tested. They have, they worked diligently to contact every second grade family in either by phone call or, or email or some kind of contact. And this, of course, they recognize does not cover the entirety of the population this year. The third grade has been provided virtual services, beginning with the in-person learning as it is implemented currently. The specialist will be doing a concurrent virtual and in-person classroom. So this will be a good pilot, so to speak, for information in, in terms of a larger group. The governor's schools, both Commonwealth and Chesapeake Bay applications are completed and the interviews have been done virtually. The results should go out by the end of March. So, to all the, the students and their families who are waiting, good luck. Concerns were noted for the need for an additional middle school gifted resource teacher who is certified. So, we, as we review our budget and our needs continuing, this will be a, a person who is, is going to be very important to providing the needs for this special population. This, this population with special needs. It was noted that our Virginia General Assembly is studying the issue of equity in identification and provision of services for gifted and talented students. And that is shared locally as well and, and has been for some time. We continue to be concerned about the issue of equity, both in identification and in providing services. So the next meeting will be scheduled and I believe it will be on a Wednesday for the next session. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Collins? Okay, I also do not have any committee reports. So this time we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Benson, do you have anything to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to again congratulate Ms. Weins and the drama program, the students who represented our school so well and who will, again, it sounds like have a chance to represent our school and participate in a fabulous opportunity coming up soon. I also want to congratulate, you know, this sounds odd, but we've started our fall sports here at the end of winter. And I want to congratulate and, and laud our, our student athletes who are representing our school in the, in the VHSL activities, in the middle school activities that have just commenced. I also want to thank, and I can tell you that the middle school recently hosted SOL testing as required. And they did a fabulous job. We should have great confidence in our school's ability to organize these events. I can, I, I believe Grenada was invaded with less planning than the SOL testing at the middle school. But they did a fabulous job, went above and beyond hosting our students safely for those important assessments. And then finally, I've had a chance to, to begin participating in some faculty meetings that are designed to honor and recognize our teachers of the year at our different schools. So I've had a nice, a, a meeting with the middle school the other day. I'm looking forward to meeting with high school later this week, as well as the other elementaries. And soon then, once all those are announced at their respective schools, we will make arrangements to then recognize them either here or at our, our annual spring event where we recognize excellence throughout our division, should we be able to have that in-person. But that's it. I thank you and I thank, congratulate our third through sixth grade teachers who welcomed our students in the blue group today for their first in-person instruction. I'm sure there were some very tired students and teachers this evening after having that day of, of in-person instruction. But they continue to do a fabulous job. I appreciate all of them and I appreciate the, our families who have supported our students, continue to support our students, in particular those who've now made new arrangements to help with transportation and, and help with the transition to in-person learning. We're very excited about it and, again, my thanks and appreciation goes out to our, our staff. We've done a great job kicking this off here today for blue and tomorrow for gold. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. All right, our board comment. Ms. Pansiera?
So, um, you know, I just, I, I just want to bring up one thing and I, I'm a little disturbed at a comment that our teachers are the priority and they are not the priority. They are heroes, there's no doubt. They worked hard, they've done their best. They, especially this year, they've gone above and beyond, but they are not our priority as a board. Our code of conduct states nothing about the teachers. It is all about the children. And the welfare of the children, the welfare of the community, the, the education, listening to the, the data, listening to the public. And we have not done that. I, I, I'm sorry, but I feel that we have grossly failed in that. And it's discouraging and it's upsetting that we continue to go down the road of not being definitive, not listening to our counter, our counterparts, not listening to what the public and the parents want for their children. We hear from the governor and even on, just want to read one thing that is on the King George, or the Virginia Department of Education. It says, "According to the Virginia Department of Education website, the department depicts the severity of the long-term school closures by saying, quote, 'Long-term school closures as a mitigation strategy for COVID-19 transmission may cause inadvertent harm to children. For example, children who do not have in-person instruction, children who do not have in-person instruction may suffer loss, learning loss, and with long-term effects, mental health issues or potential regression in social skills." Therefore, it's our duty and our responsibility to reopen our schools and provide a valuable and equitable education and of instruction. and of instruction for all of our children. We are failing that right now and it's discouraging. It's upsetting. And I, I, I think that we need to continue to move on and look at what is right for the children of this community and of our district. It's not about what we did last year. It's not about what we weren't given or heard or were permitted to do last year. It's not the priorities of the teachers. It's a priority to keep them all safe. We've listened to that. We've done that and we haven't listened to the experts in the past. And now all of a sudden we're listening to the experts. So I, I'm, I, we're wishy-washy. It's full of hypocrisy and we need to start listening to the community and we need to move on. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Pansier. Ms. Hawk?
Forgive me for taking a moment, but, um, I think in this business, failure is not an option. Students are struggling. Educators are struggling. Families are struggling and yes, we as board members are struggling. Nurses and doctors, public health care, speech pathologists, PTs, custodians, grocery store workers, the entire population is struggling as we have done in so many other scenarios in our world. But failure is not an option. We continue to process information each day and each week brings new information and new sources of hope and support. We, you're right. We can't look to last year or last month even, but we surely can learn lessons from those experiences. And if we don't learn lessons of the past, you know, as the famous saying goes, we're doomed to repeat. We, we, we will only fail if we repeat. My, um, comments were, were designed to be positive. And that is what I want to continue to do. I think this board, um, needs to look at the barriers, not as barriers, but as things to be done. And yes, right now, we, we can't do much about the, um, state of emergency. Either the governor declares it or he doesn't, or he doesn't. But we can use the, uh, care money. We can use the information. We can use the, the support coming out of this situation to make better plans. And in that regard, I, I want to say thank you so much to all the principals and all the teachers and all the paras and all of the folks in the school system for spending the time to give us an update on, on the options. We look, we, 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 we all want our kids back in school. We all want our grandchildren. We all want the, the grocery store workers' children back in school. The, the point is we want them back in school safely. Yes, they are our priority, but in order to keep them our priority, we've got to have every piece of, of the function moving safely. I want to say thank you to all the folks involved in the opening day, uh, today of the Blue Goal. Uh, I'll be really eager to hear how it went, the challenges, the, the lessons we need to learn from it. As we play out the week, we'll, we'll see more and hear more, I'm sure. I want to say that, uh, this was another step in the right direction. Uh, Mr. Collins, I also really hope that we can have, uh, a graduation of some sort. Even if we just high five through car windows, something that we can do to celebrate this. These students and families have had a terrible year. We acknowledge that. I want to give kudos to, to Ms. Fisher again, because the, the rollout continues. The, the number of educators and custodians and bus drivers getting their vaccinations. The second round of vaccinations has continued very successfully. The people who are conducting these, um, these vaccinations and these, uh, clinics around it are kind and, uh, have a good sense of humor and they give really good shots and it, it is important to, uh, dispel the misinformation that's out there. We've had, we've had success with the vaccinations. I hope we continue to. And again, thank you to Mary Fisher because she's still continuing to roll out options. I also wanted to say that masks are still relevant. I've had both of my shots. I'm still wearing the mask. I, I continue to plan to and to follow the CDC guidelines. I, I think we have listened to science. We have listened to the experts. We have followed our administrators and the staff's opinions. And I, I think that, um, we can say thank you to the families for supporting this. And yes, many families have great needs that continue and we acknowledge those, but the fact is that we will proceed in an orderly fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Oliver?
Just one correction, Ms. Pansier. I said the teachers were a priority, not the priority. I agree that students are a priority as well. And, and I don't think that we can successfully have students back in school without staff that's healthy and able to be there doing what they're supposed to be doing. I want to echo Dr. Benson's, um, comments and Ms. Hawk's about thanking the staff and all the administrators of all our schools who've worked super, super hard in the last several months to, to get us to where we are. It may not be perfect, but it's a whole lot better than where we were six or eight months ago. I've made enough comments. I'm not going to belabor some of my points. So thank you.
Ms. Oliver. Mr. Collins?
I do like to thank, uh, the staff and, um, but I'm, I'm concerned about their fatigue as far as, um, the board's, not being clear and concise information, um, given to them. As you know, we've, it, it, you know, it's been a challenging year, but we also need to celebrate the things that are positive. And, um, I, I want to continue having clear information and positive information for our, for our community. That's where most of the, uh, where a lot of the, um, misunderstandings occur, when it's not, there's not clear information. And I frankly, I have to say that sometimes I'm not, I'm not, I don't, I don't get clear information either, you know, it, um, and I agree with Mr. Pansier that we need to move forward and, and try to get these students back in school. And whatever it takes to promote that, um, I'm interested in. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Um, I would like to again congratulate our Hamilton Education Program winners and to thank Ms. Weins, who was here earlier, for bringing that to our attention and for, for providing these creative opportunities for our students. I might also like to echo my colleague's sentiments and thank all of our staff, administrators, teachers, bus drivers, and all else who have enacted our reopening plans to date. As with our K through two return in January, I know there were a lot of really excited students, parents, teachers, and building administrators and staff who were excited to have three through six return to the buildings today. And I know they're excited about the, the March 22nd date as well. Um, the minutes from the 20th, the January 25th meeting today reminded me that, um, I think, Dr. Benson, you were going to check on the, any remaining fund balance from the annual audit, um, from the board of supervisors. And I was just wondering if we could get an update on that in the future. And then a few meetings ago, we also got a presentation on the middle school expansion and there was an offer to schedule a tour of the middle school. I know I'm very interested in a tour, so just wondering if we could also just maybe follow up, um, and get that scheduled at some point and then not so distant future. And then as for the comment this evening about failing our students, I firmly believe that the welfare of our students relies on the welfare of our school system. And that includes all of our, that includes that of our teachers. So in order to keep our students our priority, we by default have to prioritize all of the critical elements in the system that keep our school system going. So if we disregard the advice and opinions of those whose job it is to provide an education for our students, then I believe that's how we fail our students. Um, so that's all I have to say. Thank you. Um, at this time, do we have a motion to move into closed meeting?
Madam Chair, can I, one more thing? Um, I, I was wondering if we could schedule, um, or have discussion and, or, or ask Dr. Benson to have a, so that the middle school is complete. And so usually in King George, we have a, um, opening ceremony of some type. And so we'd like to ask that.
To do that in person or to have, to do that when we could gather people in person, but a dedication.
We can stand down here. I mean, as long as it's less than 15 minutes, we can do something.
I, I was just thinking, I, for more than just, um, the two boards, if, if we want to have other people. As, as, you know, as an example.
Yeah, no, certainly. Very, yep, valid suggestion. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Pursuant to state code section 2.2 dash 3711 point A, point one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, resignation, and retirements of employees of the school board, I move that we go into closed session.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session. A motion to remove, return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712. D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second, certify.
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 Certify. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. We are now in open session. Do we have a motion to accept personnel as presented?
Motion to accept personnel as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye. We are now adjourned.